Good afternoon. I will now call our April 28th special work session of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to order at 5:02 PM. Number two on our agenda item, on our agenda tonight is ordinance number 2038, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.1, the purpose, Section 6-2, applicability, Section 6-3, definitions, Article 2, Section 6-4, the Board of Election Supervisors and Election Judges', appointment, Section 6-5, powers and duties of the Board of Election Supervisors, Section 6-6, compensation and oaths of the Board of Election Supervisors, Article, what is that, Article 3, voters, Section 6-7, voters list, Article 6, candidates for public office, Section 6-9, nominations and certificates of candidates, C, Section 6-10, qualifications for candidates for public office, Section 6-11, acceptance of nominations for public office, Section 6-12, candidates to comply with laws and regulations, Section 6-13, election of public officials to be nonpartisan, Article 4, conduct of elections, Section 6-14, establishment of ward election districts, Section 6-15, election day, Section 6-16, electioneering activities, Section 6-17, conduct at polling places, Section 6-18, challengers and watchers, Section 6-19, campaign materials, Section 6-20, campus of election, Section 6-21, returns, Section 6-22, certification of results, Section 6-23, recounts, Article 6, Fair Campaign Finance Act, Section 6-24, distribution of summary of election laws, Section 6-25, appointment of campaign treasurer, candidate joining ticket or slate, Section 6-26, contributions and expenditures of pass-through treasurer, Section 6-27, books, records, and receipts of treasurer, Section 6-28, contributions of candidate, Section 6-29, limits of contributions, Section 6-30, expenditures by treasurer, Section 6-31, election reports to be filed by treasurer, Section 6-32, requirements for filing of reports by successful candidate, Section 6-33, maintenance of reports, Article 5, violations of election laws and applicable penalties, Section 6-34, prohibited conduct, Section 6-35, penalties for certain prohibited conduct, and providing an effective date. All right, Sarah Green, City Clerk, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So we have before you some edits that were done to the ordinance from February after the council had a chance to review everything. So in the draft, there are new highlights in green are the items that were revised after we received the council comments. The changes in yellow are the amendments and edits that the council provided. And the blue is the newest edits that I made today to the draft. And we're available, I mean, we have Mr. Marcus and Sidney Patterson, the legal counsel for the Board of Election Supervisors, available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anything that they would like to share as well with the council in advance, or will they wait for our questions and comments?
I think their intention was just to wait for questions, right, Mr. Marcus?
That's correct. To the extent that we can be helpful, much of this material, I think we reviewed with the council before. There are revisions that have been made. Ms. Green has been diligent in making sure that all of those items are brought to your attention by way of color coding. Hopefully, we've addressed all the problems and questions that the council had.
Thank you so much for your work on this. We know that it has been a lot to go, to incorporate everyone's thoughts and comments. So thank you in advance for that. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Please proceed, Councilmember Simmons.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, and thank you also to the election advisors and to the clerk, I know, who's put in many, many hours, as well as the Board of Election Supervisors, who have worked on this for so long at this point. I think it's going to serve the city for the best in the long run, despite being such a big lift. So thank you to everybody who's involved. In my mind, in terms of what guides my thoughts as we approach both this ordinance and its sort of companion legislation, the Charter Resolution 181, is really a fourfold objective for the city. One, that we have a process that's clear and easily understood. Two, that all the candidates who would enter a race would be provided an even playing field. Three, that we respect all the residents' voting rights. And four, that we have as simple a path as possible to get to a good result for our city every two and four years. So that, as I'm looking at each clause that we've edited and the different changes we're proposing, those are really the sort of decision principles I'm filtering them through. There's lots of good work, lots of hard work in here. There's a couple amendments that I do expect to propose, but I want to home in on a main theme for me that we discussed back in February and sort of been chewing on since then. And I can forward some proposed language, but I just wanted to review it in a big picture in our conversation tonight. And what our city really wants is for good people to step forward, to sort of be willing to serve the city and to give them a fair and equitable process, to sort of be in that run. I know most elections, when we think about federal, state, county elections, they're sort of like a normal application window that anybody who wants to step forward can sort of toss their hat into the ring. They submit their paperwork. People can share that they're running. Others can enter the race if they think maybe that person isn't the best option, or they want to sort of put their best foot forward. You know, there's a natural cutoff when all applications have to be submitted so that the administrative work, especially by the Board of Elections, has enough time to get done. You hold the elections, you take the votes, you tally them up, and you get to an end result. For Laurel, just based on reading this and the experience of the last election, you know, we've got a couple provisions that make that function a little differently, and I'd like us to maybe consider tweaking a couple of them. Right now, our code provides that somebody can, a candidate, that is to say, can provide an application by the last Friday in September. Our practice has been more of mid-July. But in my mind, part of the complication that arises is the way we do sort of the candidate application process, and nobody knows who's running, it's sort of a secret thing. And people can't even announce that they're a candidate, you know, prior to the certification process, which happens in mid-July. And there's a lot of really good residents involved, both in the volunteers, both in the candidates stepping forward, but it sometimes leads to difficulties that I think we could avoid with a couple, you know, simple tweaks to the process. So where I'm leading this to, we can work out the particulars of the language, but big picture for my colleagues, for those with us this evening, my thought is that our applications become available to any candidate at some reasonable time. You know, when that is, maybe it's up for debate. My idea is maybe six months prior to Election Day. So Lucy, that's May 1, that an application could be provided. Step two, a candidate could submit their application, and once they submit their application, they could announce, hey, I'm intending to run for X position. And they, you know, don't have to be prevented from sort of sharing that with other people, as they may want to. Number three, that the application window is open for a reasonable time window. Again, maybe there's some debate on what that time window is, but I'm thinking three months is pretty reasonable. So maybe like May 1 to August 31, or June 1 to August 31, somewhere in there. And that sort of allows people to sort of think about, consult with others, throw their hat in the ring. And then with that cutoff on August 31, that gives the Board of Elections sort of two months to sort of do any wrap-up that they need to do before Election Day, beginning of November. So, again, thought is, simple, straightforward process, respects the residents, respects the candidates, respects the board, everybody's trying to do their job, and in my mind, that sort of leads to the best possible outcome for the city in the long run. So I'll close with that thought, but I at least wanted to share that big picture. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments? There or none?
I have some.
Okay. Councilmember Mills, please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. And so, I want to bring this to attention, that basically, last year, or the year before, when I was petitioning to run for this seat that I sit in, I actually found these loopholes that were in the laws, and which led me to have to file for an appeal with the Board of Appeal, the city's Board of Appeal. And these individuals that are wishing to change these rules, they, I did a pros and cons to this. So the Board of Appeal, our Board of Appeal, it allows our constituents, the cost, in which, I don't know if the cost is going to be raised or lowered, but the cost that I paid to have an appeal was $350. The con to that is, Mr. Marcus and those who have drafted these drafts are wanting the constituents to go to, skip the Board of Appeal and go to the city of, well, go to Marlboro, to the Circuit Court. Well, when you file in for court, an individual who are not knowledgeable of court proceedings would have to perhaps hire an attorney, which would cost roughly around $1,500 or more. And then after the court, you have to pay roughly $150 an hour for attorney fees. There's a, if I can ask Mr. Marcus, if you can explain the term quasi-judicial rule? Q-U-A?
Quasi. The context of quasi-judicial is something that sort of exists where it's not necessarily a court, and there are not necessarily legal decisions that are being made. It doesn't function, quasi-judicial bodies don't function according to the same rules of procedure, nor are they bound to necessarily what we call stare decisis, the precedent, cases that have been decided before. So if the issue that you're inquiring about relates to the Board of Appeals, I assume?
Correct.
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
So the thing about it is, there has been some confusion about what the role of the Board of Appeals was.
Well, Mr. Marcus, can you, let me interrupt, interject, actually. So I just want to give a definition of, you said the term is quasi-judicial, which means similar to a court proceeding but conducted by an administrative or executive body. And in that case, and in that case, the executive body is our Board of Appeal, correct?
Well...
That's just a yes or no.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I can answer a yes or no. Your body, if you're talking about the City Council...
No, sir. No, sir. I'm talking about the Board of Appeals. I'll read this definition again. It says, the meaning, "similar to a court proceeding but conducted by an administrative or executive body." Like a hearing by a Human Rights Commission, it involves applying existing laws to specific facts in a formal manner, akin to a court trial. That's what I had when I ran, when I filed for an appeal. The appeal was the appeal from the decision of the Board of Elections Supervisors. I paid $350, and I stood right here in this room, and I presented my case to the Board of Appeal. And they made a decision that day, and I got a decision that day, and in which they ruled in my favor to be able to run. So I, Mr. Marcus is interested in us, or constituents, to run to the Circuit Court, but the Circuit Court is actually a second process in a grievance. If someone is to aggrieve a situation or matter here in this city, and this city is like no other municipality, we have the authority to, or let's just say, there would be no reason to, you might as well just, are we asking to dismantle the Board of Appeal? No, we're not asking that. We asking to allow the constituents to use this, our Board of Appeal, and not go to the Circuit Court, in which is going to cost constituents more money, more time. Well, in your own writing, you say that it would only take five, roughly five days to get an answer from the Circuit Court. Well, I beg to differ, because in Prince George's County, this is one of the busiest court systems besides Baltimore City. And so, you know, just these pros and cons, the travel time, there's no travel time. And the second, the, I'm sorry, the third, the first process, let's run down the process. The process of appeal using the Board of Appeal, which would be the first process in the city of Laurel. If an individual did not agree with that agreement, with that judgment, then you can, the second step would be to go to the Circuit Court. If you didn't agree with that outcome, then the third and final step is the Supreme Court. So we have three steps in this process. The destination made, that decision was made the same day for me, and I was sworn in in November. Now, if you have a individual, to say five days is a false statement, and that's based on outsourced attorneys. Like, it takes 30, and this is from other law firms that I outsourced and got this information from. It takes 30 to 150 days for a decision to be made in Prince George's Courts. And which, like I said, is the most, one of the most busiest court systems. And it's made, the other pro is, it's made convenient for our constituents. The last is, the cost factor for constituents is far greater, and this is a con, is far greater, and to have 50, 100, 30 to 150 days will perhaps cost that candidate to be sworn in, or candidates to be sworn in all the way into March or April. This will push our process back, and it will cost the city more money to do such. So I'll close with that, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. In addition to that, I do have a couple of questions, if possible, for Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson. First, thank you for working on this with our city clerk. Again, we know that it's a lot of work, and we really appreciate your time. My first question is, if possible, just for clarity, can you please explain the difference between Option A and Option B for ordinance number 2038?
So, Option A, I believe, contains the Board's, the Board of Elections' recommendations.
That's correct.
This matter went back to the Board of Elections Supervisors, and what you are seeing in Option A would be the incorporation of the comments from the Board of Elections Supervisors. Okay? The items that are in B were not recommended. It incorporates, I believe it has the Board of Appeals and some other things which we have not recommended, because the Board of Appeals applies to a completely different set of circumstances. So we did not recommend that that be included, and there are other items that are reflected in Option B.
Yeah.
Madam President?
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
I just have one more.
Just, go ahead.
Yeah, it's okay, no problem. Thank you so much for explaining that. So Option A, were the original recommendations by yourself, Ms. Patterson, and the Board of Elections? And Option B basically incorporates what the council may have wanted to adjust, if I understand that correctly? But that is not recommended, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just so that it's clear, our role here is to facilitate discussion and consideration by the council. These things do not, and to the extent that we have made recommendations, the recommendations are consistent with what we understand election law to include, and the way that elections are conducted, not only in Maryland, but in many of the municipalities. There are some variations based on different cities and the way that they conduct their business, but to the extent that we have made recommendations, they were to improve, clean up, and to conform the existing ordinance and charter with what we believe would be sound election law, so that the city can comply with an orderly election process and administer the election in a way that no one is going to have serious questions about the outcome and the administration of an election.
Understood. Thank you. I think for clarity, for the council, and I'm not sure, we do have in the room our Chair for the Board of Elections, Mr. Wiliford. Would you like to speak to any of this for us to provide clarity as well?
Well, I wasn't prepared to, but...
No, it's no problem.
I have questions I can answer after my question.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that we gave you an opportunity as well. Thank you so much for being here today. We appreciate it.
I do have a question for both of them.
Okay, I have one more.
Madam President, then after you, I have another one, please.
Okay. Now, we have, okay. In addition to that, if you don't mind explaining, and whether this is Mr. Marcus, Mr. Patterson, or Madam Clerk, in regards to if the council wanted to continue to keep the Board of Appeals in the loop for Section 6-10, what would be needed to make that adjustment?
So, we have not specifically looked at the origins, but bear with me one second, that the, you would have to expand whatever the role of the Board of Appeals would be. To this point, the confusion is that the Board of Appeals essentially has served in the capacity of enforcing and making decisions about the land development code, which is very similar to other interim bodies that deal with land use. So for example, if you looked at the county code, there's a zoning hearing examiner, and there are boards of appeals that apply in other government authorities. But the Board of Elections, nowhere to our knowledge is there a Board of Appeals that functions in land use matters that all of a sudden winds up involved in dealing with matters that relate to elections. Now, if you take a look, and I, you know, not sure how this came up, but there is a unified land development code that the city uses, and it is found in Section 20, Article 1, of the zoning provisions of the city, and specifically at Section 20-5.2, it defines the powers and duties. And in our review of it, and I would commend that all of the members of the council look at this, to see where powers and duties confer or convey any authority on the part of the Board of Appeals to engage in oversight of what the election board does. You have two separate bodies, one of which is theoretically steeped in knowledge and experience in election administration and the conduct of an election, and the other, which has as its expertise zoning variances, topographical conditions, and other conditions that relate to parcels of property. And so, while it may be that people who are assigned to the Board of Appeals are familiar with some election processes, the reality is, is that the way the code is structured and the powers and duties that are given to the board appear to be in the realm of land use and approvals. So if one decided that you wanted to properly create an interim step, I presume that what would happen is, you'd have to give them power that they do not have right now. And so, the reason for removing them is pretty much as we had previously discussed with the council and also with the Board of Elections Supervisors, that it was not designed for this body or this group to be involved in election appellate issues. So you can write anything that you want, it just means that you have to give this body power that it does not have at this time.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it. Councilmember Mills has provided time first to Councilmember Cole, so Councilmember Cole, and then we'll have Councilmember Mills again.
Sure. Looking at ordinance 2038, we have Option A and B. They're both identical. I'm seeing that the only thing that really is substantially different between the two is the Board of Appeals versus the District Court. I wanted to thank the Board of Elections Supervisor and the clerk for giving us two options. I think that's going to help us move this legislation forward, if those are the only two sticking points. So I just wanted to say that I would support moving this on to the regular agenda at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Councilmember Mills?
I was to beg to differ on that. Mr. Marcus, I'd like to ask you a question. How long have you been an attorney with the city?
You know what, I don't think I can give you the exact date, because my recollection of when we got engaged would not necessarily be accurate, but I can tell you that it's probably been four or five election cycles at least. But I'm sure the city's records will reflect when it was that we first became involved.
Cycles for council or cycles for mayor?
I think it may have been a mayoral race. Did you say something?
Yes, so at least 20 years.
I don't believe it's 20 years.
Probably 15.
All right.
I don't believe it's 20.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Wiliford, can you step to the mic, please?
You can just press that button.
So, thank you for coming out, first of all, sir. How long have you been a, on the, helping with the supervisor, election supervisor?
Better than 20 years.
20 years. And so, Mr. Marcus said that the Laurel, the Laurel Board of Appeals is used for other circumstances, right? What type, what circumstances would that be?
Well, like he said, for land use and things like that.
Okay. And so, for 15 years, Mr. Marcus, and 20 years for yourself or more, the, let me ask you, would you agree with this statement here? It says, "A Board of Appeals in Maryland, like in many jurisdictions, serve as a quasi", I could be saying that wrong, "judicial body that hears appeals from decisions made by the local government or its agencies, particularly those related to zoning, right? Land use, and other administrative matters." That situation that I had was another administrative matter, would you agree?
Not necessarily.
Okay, how would you, what would you say?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, "other" is a broad word.
Sure is, isn't it?
But certainly, the Board of Appeals, there's a lot of things that are not within their realm of doing anything with, many things, not just, you know, "the other" is a big word for that.
Yeah, it sure is. So, other.
I don't even recall your case that well, and how that went out.
Madam President, may I insert a point of order? I don't believe the gentleman was prepared to speak tonight, so I don't know that he should be called as a witness. I can insert as a point of order.
Madam President, he says yes, 20 years, and he was the vice president at the time when I was, or you were the?
Are you talking about the last election?
The last election that I was.
I was the chief judge.
Chief, chief judge.
For Ward 1.
Yes, okay. You said for Ward 1?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So, the, so, so following up, the board essentially provides a mechanism for individuals or organizations to contest decisions, the board, right? And so, this, this Board of Appeal that we have, that you all have sent, you've sent, you, your board, sent me to the Board of Appeal, Laurel Board of Appeals.
No, we did not send you there.
Madam President, I want to interject again, as a point of order, parliamentary procedure, this was not on the agenda for this evening. He's not called, should not be called as a point of order.
Did you, or did you not send?
Thank you.
Me to, you said, in writing?
No.
I can show it to you in black and white, if you like.
Okay.
Now, but, but also, the fact.
We did not send you anywhere.
The, also, it says in writing, "If you wish to appeal, you can appeal with the Board of Appeals, City Board of Appeals." You did not send me to circuit court, you didn't send me to the Supreme Court.
Right.
You sent me to the Board of Appeals here.
Councilmember Mills, if you could please.
In my last, in my last statement.
Thank you.
You, with your 20 years of being the chief.
20 years plus.
20 years on being on a board. In this option A and this option B, now, did you have any, any part in drafting this?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask the attorney, though, so I appreciate your time. I'm gonna ask.
Since I'm up here, if I could, Madam President.
I'm about to ask Mr. Marcus a question.
But let him, if you can, let.
I don't need it.
I understand, but you have him up here now, so we have to let him speak. Chair, please proceed.
One thing, talking about the Board of Appeals, by the Laurel Board of Appeals or the county, the way I'd look at it is, one way that I look at it, is the Laurel Board of Appeals are all voters, they're all city of Laurel voters, and the county is a third party. And that being that, I feel like it's important to have a third party involved in an appeal. Another thing, in my 20-plus years, I believe there's only been one time that anybody had to appeal anything, because it's always been a very smooth election with no reasons for anybody to appeal anything. But, in that case, when you have a Board of Appeals that are all citizens of Laurel, and they are all voters, there could be some people on that Board of Appeals, if not all five of them, that, that person that is before them is their person that they want to vote for. So, there, there's, you know, there's that, where that could have some bias, and it could really throw something off in, in that election, where somebody actually gets in there that really shouldn't be in there.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good word that you use, bias, because we know that I dealt with bias. That's why, that's why we're here today.
That's fine.
And, and so, you know, to say that those Board of Appeal members are voters, you're a voter too.
Sure.
So, keep that in mind.
I know, I know.
Thank you very much.
But when it comes down to making that decision, a third party is a much better way to go about that.
But that's just your feeling, sir, that's not black and white. That's your feeling, not black and white.
You gotta let him finish, you gotta let him finish.
Yes, that's your feeling.
Did you, did you need to proceed, mister?
No.
Well, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
So, my last question was for Mr. Marcus.
Okay, we also have the mayor as well, if you could.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes, sir.
So, how long have you been an attorney, sir?
Um.
Do we not know that?
Well, I'm trying to get you to write it up. It'll be 25 or 40 years in this, actually, November 19th, 1977.
Well, thank you for your service, sir. My, my question, with all those years that, of service that you have, and with all of that knowledge that you have, and this, these two articles, A, option A, and B, have nothing to do with land use or any such, but you and the Board of Election Supervisors still left in this packet, these two packets here, the term "Board of Appeals" means the city of Board of Appeals. If you didn't want us to use the Board of Appeals, why would you even leave it? Why would you not strike it in both of these articles?
So, the way that I understand government works, Mr. Mills, is that the Board, the Board of Elections Supervisors does not write or pass laws. In fact, the way that it works is that laws and regulations and ordinances are actually passed by the legislative body, which in this case would be the city council and the mayor. The lawyers nor the board write the law. The reason we're sitting here with you making decisions is not because the lawyers wrote or drafted that, it's because it, they were the enactments of the city government. Now, the reason that we're here is because we now understand that there have been questions that have arisen in the last election cycle that had not happened in anyone's memory, and that because of that, and because of the potential confusion, we were asked to take a look at it, to make suggestions, so that these kinds of confusing and somewhat anxiety-producing issues can be resolved in an orderly fashion. The reason that we're here now is to address the questions that you have raised and others in order to ensure that the county or the city council and the mayor decide on a set of laws and ordinances that correctly and accurately reflect the way that government is supposed to function. So, to the extent that you think that the lawyers did it, they haven't given us that authority yet, the best we can do is make suggestions when we are asked to provide that information.
Well, I appreciate you defining my role, but your role earlier, you said, before we started this, you said that you had a part in this, and I'm just wanting to know why, with your expertise, why would you leave such information in this packet that we have to pass?
Madam President, will you answer that? Yes, I was gonna say, to clarify, we also have our city clerk that has worked on this as well, and just want to bring the conversation back to focus, so that we can then not only include the mayor, because he has a comment and question, thank you, Councilmember Mills, but please go ahead and clarify as well.
So, the change, the option B and option A were something that I came up with, because there was such a divide on the council between the two decisions, the decision of keeping the Board of Appeals and not keeping the Board of Appeals. So, in order to give you the mayor and council options, I drafted B, to leave the board in as it is in the code right now, and also to, I think the other question was about, what was it?
Treasurer.
Treasurer. The appointment of a treasurer, or if someone could serve as their own treasurer. So, I wanted to have one with what the attorneys and I and the Board of Elections Supervisors recommended, which is option A. And then, we left in, we, I created option B to give options to the mayor and council. I sent a memo to the council dated April 15th, where I explained that, you know, after reviewing, and Mr. Marcus and Sidney Patterson reviewed the section that talks about the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals is only contained within the Unified Land Development Code, and it does not give them authority to hear appeals of the Board of Elections Supervisors' decisions, because none of the Board of Elections Supervisors, and none of the code or ordinance charter that applies to anything that they rule on or that they decide on is contained within the Unified Land Development Code. So, the recommendation was, if the mayor and council decide to keep the Board of Appeals in the process, you're gonna have to do yet another charter or code amendment to allow the Board of Appeals to even, to have the authority to hear the, any appeal from the Board of Elections Supervisors. If not, as Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson informed us, a decision, if the Board of Appeals were to make a decision on a Board of Elections Supervisors' decision, it could be challenged in court. Now, the problem was, was in the 21 changes, the Board of Appeals was somehow put in to the election laws, but nobody made the connection between, that it, they weren't even in the correct code. So, that's where option B came from, and why option B was put forward. So, hopefully, that provides some clarification there. So, the attorneys are making a recommendation, and, you know, it is up to the mayor and city council, we're just simply trying to inform you that if you want to continue with that, there's some more changes that have to be made later down the road, that we would have to involve Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Mayor Sidnor, I know that you also wanted to speak as well.
Yeah, give me one second.
Okay, all right. Are you gonna take a second?
Can we, Madam President, can we read the actual, in the charter, for the Board of Appeals, the role for the Board of Appeals? And also, if the Board of Appeals were not supposed to do this, this administrative job, then that just shows some incompetence from the Board of Supervisors, and it shows Mr., the incompetence, incompetence from the attorneys, because nobody challenged that, but you sure took my money. I had to pay $2,000 to pay the fine, pay the fine, and they, they said that if I wanted to appeal, pay $350 to have an appeal, in writing I have, from the Board of Supervisors.
So, you're asking for us to read it, or are you just clarifying?
I would like, I would like to have full clarification, and not just coming off of some whim. Where's the black and white? Read it tonight for the role of the Board of Elections, I'm sorry, Board of Appeals, tonight.
All right, so while we're looking through that, Mayor Sidnor, would you like to proceed and speak in the meantime?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I thank you all for working on it, Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson, Ms. Williford. I think two things could be true. We found out that the process is not in the charter resolution, that's why it was implemented in today's ordinance, but I do agree slightly with a third-party process. Goes to the Board of Elections Supervisors, which is made of all our committees are volunteers, registered voters from the city. Every committee we have in the city is volunteers, then none of them get paid, from the planning commission, to the Board of Elections Supervisors, to the Board of Appeals. So, I understand, we get new information, we gotta correct it. So, what we're doing right now, we got new information, we're trying to correct it. But I do believe that if the Board of Elections found a person not qualified, that person should have an appeal process. And I always stood by the appeal process, because that's the way our courts has been set up. The appeal process, go to the appeal process, well, we gotta change our language in the charter, and we have to do that, or, you know, because that, I believe that Board of Appeal process should be a step. Then after the Board of Appeal process is denied, then that person have a final authority go to the Prince George County Circuit Court, which is a final authority, you know, not the, it doesn't go to the Maryland Supreme Court, it stops at Prince George County Circuit Court. So, like you said, we never had this problem before, and, but we do got new information, it's not in the charter, because I just read through it, double-checked it again, so it is in the ordinance, according to the Madam Clerk saying that if we do want to put a Board of Appeal process and the extra duties, we have to do a charter amendment, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That would be probably more for Ms. Anderson, it would either have to go in the code or this charter as far as election laws, I would believe.
Okay, we can come back, we can look that up, but I do, I, my position is that, you know, if the Board of Supervisor found a candidate ineligible, that candidate should go to a Board of Appeal process, whether, you know, whether we got amended charter or do an ordinance or code, go through that process, have a certain time limit for that Board of Appeals to review that process and make a determination. If the candidate is still not satisfied with determination, once again, from the Board of Appeals, then that candidate can go to the Prince George County Circuit Court. Then, once the Prince George County Circuit Court make a ruling on that position, that's the final position. It doesn't go to the Maryland Supreme Court, it stops at the Prince George County Circuit Court, and that's my position on that, that ordinance, Madam Clerk, Madam President, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your input, thank you, thank you to the Madam Clerk and to Ms. Patterson, and Chair, thank you for being here as well, Mr. Williford. We appreciate you explaining, all of you, and making it clear. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments regarding ordinance number 2038?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President.
Okay, I'm sorry, you both spoke at the same time, if we can let the mayor, and then.
He can go, I'll go last.
Okay.
So, not on the appeals process, I think I posed my argument for that, but the, I did show the council that other municipalities, such as Greenbelt, and other municipalities around, state that an individual who's running for candidacy may not, it says that in their charter, it may specifically not say that they cannot be their own treasurer, or it may say that they cannot be their treasurer, and then other, such as Greenbelt states that a candidate can be his or her own treasurer. I provided that in black and white and compared, and I wish to have the fact that in this small election, this is not like Prince George's County or for the state, that that an individual that is not looking to take funds from people, and especially not in this day and time, when people are losing their jobs, that they should be out soliciting funds from individuals. If you're not, in my case, I did not, I do not, I do not and did not wish to solicit funds from any, from anyone, any persons, or packs or anything. And so I wish to be my own treasurer. And I wish that constituents, after me, can be, if they wish, to be their own treasurer.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills, for your input. Just to reconfirm, Madam Clerk, were you able to find the Board of Appeals description? If not, can you provide, okay, do you mind reading it just to-
Sure.
Thank you.
So Section 20-5.2, powers and duties. The Board is hereby empowered to adopt and from time to time amend or supplement rules or procedure not inconsistent with provisions of this article. The Board, that's talking about minutes. The Board is hereby authorized to compel the attendance of witnesses at hearings or meetings. And the chairman or secretary to the Board may administer oaths. D, they can grant variances from the strict application of this article only upon proof by a preponderance of the evidence. One, by, and it goes into details of reasonable exceptional, narrowness, shallowness of a lot. Two, such variance in the minimum reasonable necessary to overcome the aforementioned exceptional conditions. Three, such variance can be granted without substantial impairment to the intent, purpose, and integrity of the general plan or any duly adopted and approved master plan. Such variance will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment, talk more about property. Hear and decide appeals where it is alleged by appellants that there is an error in any refusal or denial of a building permit, use an occupancy permit, or in any other order requirement decision or determination made by the Director of the Department of Economic and Community Development, the Fire Marshal, the Historic District Commission, or the Planning Commission when passing upon an application for a building or other permit. They can hear and decide petitions for special exceptions, hear and decide appeals in regard to property affected by master highway plans, hear and decide petitions concerning public nuisances. The Board may, in conformity with this chapter, reverse or affirm or modify wholly or impart any decision upon which an appeal is made. And exercising all its powers and duties under this article, not less than four members of the Board shall continue, shall constitute a quorum. And that's what their purview is.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor Sidnor?
Yeah, thank you again, Madam President. Once again, the language that we read, it wasn't the appeal process, it wasn't in the Board of Appeals authority, as we've learned that. But now we know that, I still stand by that, my decision that it should be a three-step process. How we change the code, we could talk about that. But, so that's why I want to make sure. And also, while I have the floor, Mr. Marcusson and the Board of Elections Judges, they just make recommendations to us, the mayor and city council. The authority to pass stuff is on the mayor and city council. So I just want us to show them some courtesy as well, because they have, they just making recommendations. We are the final decision. We are the legislative branch, you guys are the legislative branch, you pass it. If I like it, I can concur with it, if I don't like it, I can veto it. And then you guys can over-challenge my veto. So that's how the process works. So we have to make sure we understand our positions and not attack the individuals who, you know, take time off their job and do this, especially the volunteers, you know. So just let's be, you know, I know it's heated thing, you know, we all get frustrated and passionate about certain things. But let's make something to quorum and, you know, and let's not, let's just follow, do our job. If we, if something, we're here to change it, we can write stuff up too and submit it, that's what we doing. But I stand on that position, that three-step process. The Board of Elections, whether we create a new, get lawyers on the city, I don't care how we do it, but it's something that we have to do as you guys. I can make a recommendation sponsored by administration, but it has to be agreed and signed by you as a legislative branch. So, but that's my position, I still, and once again, we found that out, knowledge is always coming in, we always finding new knowledge as we read, that's okay. We found out there was a mistake in the Board of Appeals, it shouldn't be that way. We know that their authorities is under land and code development. But at the same time, that doesn't affect that a Board of Appeal Process should be a second step. And then the Prince George County Circuit Court as a final step. That's my position, so I hope the council hear me loud and clear, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, for your input. Mayor, Councilmember Mills, you have your mic unmuted, and then I just want to continue to make sure that we're moving forward.
Yes, I'd like to ask a question, Madam Clerk. Does the, does that charter that you read, does it specifically state that the Board of Appeal do not hear administrative appeals?
It doesn't say that they do. So therefore it's percolated from their authority.
So my question is, with the expertise from the Board of Supervisors, elected supervisors, with the amount of time and years that they have, I just wish to know, why did you forward me to the Board of Appeals and not the Circuit Court? And also, why is the Board of Appeals still left in this, in these options A and B? If they, because in these options A and B, there's nothing about, there's nothing about land use. So why in the world is the Board of Appeals put into these two options here? Which we getting ready to, which we adding to make law?
So just to clarify, Councilmember Mills, I think what was said is that there was an option A and option B provided, so that we, as a council, could have the option based on what was recommended, but then also what we had input on. So that's why two of them are. One of them originally, maybe, we'll have to take a look at it, with the option A, which I believe is the one that came from the Board of Elections as a recommendation, but option B is what we wanted as a council to keep in the Board of Appeals?
Both.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, can you just clarify? Was option A not supposed to have Board of Appeals in it, or should it have Board of Appeals in it?
The definition was still in option A, so that probably is just an oversight on my part.
Okay, so it's just, it's a minor oversight that can be fixed? Just as far as the option A?
Law is not a minor, it's not an oversight.
I understand, but it, from what Madam Clerk is saying, is that option A is the one that had the definition in it?
Both of them have the definition.
Right, now option B is supposed to have it.
They had it in there because that was originally in there.
Right.
And we just didn't strike it in option A. We need to ship.
So we can note that.
So this needs to be-
So we can note it. Now what we'll do is, now, to proceed, are there any objections to moving this forward to the regular meeting?
I object.
Are there any additional objections?
Can't move forward.
Okay. I just wanted to reconfirm. So with the consensus needed, we will not move this forward right now? And we can discuss it, or it will be placed on hold?
Mike, I mean, I don't know if you want to ask the rest of the council members how they feel?
I'm assuming, from your silence, and please feel free to be, to say on the mic if you would like to move this forward, or if you have any objections. We can start with Councilmember Simmons.
I expect we might discuss amendments in the regular meeting, but I have no objection to moving forward to the regular meeting.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, I'm wondering about amendments, the option to make amendments. If we can do that, then we can move forward. If we need to push it back in order to make amendments, then we do what we need to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole.
I'm willing to move both options forward for continued discussion and amendment.
Mayor Sidnor, do you have any input as well?
Just, I think it's better to have a final document before you bring it before the public hearing. That way, you know, if the council has amendments, we should get those amendments they have with the council clerk and get those amendments in, and then we bring it back, another work session, and then go to the first public hearing, it's a final thing for the public to see, that's my recommendation.
Thank you for your input. And Councilmember Mills, do you object on moving it forward with edits or completely?
I object.
Completely? Okay. So what we will do, and if you can just reconfirm, Madam Clerk, is to, if people, if councilmembers have input, are they still providing it? Or we're definitely gonna place it on hold to not put it on tonight's 6:00 PM meeting?
Yeah, my recommendation was, if that is the case, then we probably will just need to not do anything until after this election. We're getting, we're getting into May now. And packets usually become available in June or July. So, I mean, it's up to the mayor and council, but if, you know, I don't know, we have budget coming up, I don't know how many work sessions you can really fit in.
Okay. So we can take a look at it for now. From what I'm hearing, we will not have this on the 6:00 PM agenda to discuss. We will have a discussion about it. We will figure this out later, but right now, it will not move forward to the 6:00 PM meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Again, thank you, Mr. Marcus, thank you, Ms. Patterson, thank you, Madam Clerk, for working on this. Thank you, Chair Wiliford, we appreciate you being here and for being willing to answer questions, even though we were not prepared ahead of time, but we appreciate you and the work that you do. Moving to agenda item number three, we are still in the work session, is for Charter Resolution Number 181. A Charter Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, amending, rearranging, and renumbering Article 600, Registrations and Elections. Section 601, Voters and Registration. Section 602, Election of Mayor and Council Members. Section 603, Ward Boundaries. Section 604, Polling Places. Section 605, Voting Procedures. Section 606, Same-Day Registration. Section 607, Vote-by-Mail Ballots. Section 608, Electioneering. Section 609, Election Equipment and Sample Ballots. Section 610, Compliance with Eligibility Requirements. Attendance, recall, disqualification, and suspension of elected officials. Section 611, Recall of Elected Official. Section 612, Grounds for Recall of Elected Official. Section 613, Suspension of Elected Officials. Section 614, Referenda. Section 615, Advisory Referenda. Section 616, Adoption and Incorporation of State Law Provisions. Section 617, Extraordinary Powers, Civil Emergency. Madam Clerk, you now have the floor for this agenda item, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. For the charter amendment, there's just some clarifications and some edits that were provided by the Board of Election Supervisors, and then incorporated comments from the city council. And there were no other changes that were made to the charter amendment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Marcus and I assume Ms. Patterson were also involved in this as well?
Correct.
Does anyone have any, do any of the councilmembers have any questions or comments in regards to this resolution? Please proceed, Councilmember Cole.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe what we sort of hinted at at the last agenda item, there is some time sensitivity. A charter amendment takes longer to go into effect. If we were to continue working on this one tonight, we could then work at a later date on the other ordinance. But I think the charter amendment should go forward tonight, so that it can have public hearing. There's not substantial changes to this one since our last work session. So for the amount of time, so that this can go into effect before the next city election in this fall, I think we should keep this one on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole, for your input. I believe either the mayor or Councilmember Simmons, do you have input in regards to?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Simmons?
I have one technical item to clarify. It relates to Section 608B14. Let me flip to it in my copy. Basically, it had to do with the counting of provisional votes. And if I've got my references correct, the revision here says that the provisional ballots cast without certification could be counted up until 4:00 PM on Thursday after the election, which just seemed odd to me, given that's around the time we're certifying the votes. Now, it may not be a material difference, but I just wanted to clarify if that was the intent of the draft to allow those provisional votes to be counted so close to the actual vote certification? And I guess I would be directed to Mr. Marcus or Ms. Patterson?
So unfortunately, one of the things that happens with the canvas of an election, where you have provisionals or ballots that were not cast on Election Day, is that the process of canvassing is usually towards the end. In some instances, although I haven't figured out where it fits here. For example, there are military ballots, and there are ballots by people who cast them, put them in the mail on time. So these things come together very quickly. And the canvas and the final certification of an election usually take place very shortly after Election Day, the last day that people are permitted to vote. There are some instances, usually where there are a very small number of votes, where those are counted at the end. Now, the reason for that is that typically the numbers of provisionals that are actually in play have been accepted and then can be counted, are usually very few. You're absolutely right, Councilman, that this does place a bit of a time constraint on the election administrators. But it usually, and I say usually, does not pose a major problem. If, and to make it a little bit clearer, depending on what the county is, at the time that these other votes are left to be counted, very seldom will those votes necessarily affect the outcome of the election. Not to say that they all shouldn't be counted, because obviously they should. But it doesn't pose the kind of hardship on election administrators that might otherwise be the case if you had a huge volume of these kinds of ballots that have to be counted at the end of Election Night.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Marcus. And that was the main thing, as long as we're comfortable, we can be sure that everybody who casts a vote, they get counted in that final, and the Board of Election Supervisors have enough time to do their job, is my main concern. It sounds like that is there, so thank you for helping clarify that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons or Mayor Sidnor, would you like to speak on Section 615 that was mentioned previously?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Council, I want to bring your attention to Section 6-15, the suspension of elected officials. Only thing, I want to keep the original language that we have, because the new language is saying this person is charged. As you know, a person is charged, that don't mean they're guilty yet, so they need to go through their due process. So the old language is the person is found guilty. Once a person is found guilty, then I recommend a person being removed. But the person being charged, they still going through their process, and I think we should implement that new language. We should keep the old language in Section 615. I submitted some new language to the Madam Clerk and the Council President, so they can see that language and see the new language that I submitted, and you'll see why I feel that way. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Are there any additional questions or comments regarding Resolution Number, let me get it straight, yep, Resolution Number 181? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And to the point that the mayor just made, I was curious to understand the, maybe some of the thought process behind the change. It was, again, originally suspension upon being found guilty, and it was changed to suspension upon being charged. I'm sure there was a conversation around that, and so it might be helpful to council to hear some of that thought process. Again, perhaps that's from Mr. Marcus?
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is, this is the kind of policy decision that people in the legislative body have to grapple with. The question here really is one of trying to marry up the presumption of innocence with the obvious problems that are associated with people who may be charged with serious crimes. I don't want to get into particulars, there obviously are plenty of instances that are in the media and nationally of people who were charged with crimes and then are still candidates for office. I don't need to point it out to you. I hope we all read the newspapers and we're all familiar with instances where people who are candidates for elective office are running and charged with maybe very serious and heinous kinds of crimes. The issue here is a decision that's made by a legislative body- The issue here is a decision that's made by a legislative body, which in this case is this council, as to whether you wait until a conviction is obtained and that trial takes place. Now, you know that one of the issues that comes up is the speed with which criminal trials are conducted. Under the rules in the state of Maryland, if you're charged with a crime in the jurisdiction of the state court, you have 180 days after the indictment or the charge in the circuit court in order to have that case tried. And in many instances, those cases are continued by the consent of either the state or the defense. So you have the very strong possibility of a serious case, serious charge, hanging fire while someone may well be sitting in elective office at a time when he or she is awaiting trial, or for that matter, if you use the word convicted, which we have here, or conviction of guilt is affirmed, then the affirmance of that could easily be after an appeal or something of that nature. So you could have somebody serve a whole term and be convicted of an offense. And we take, we take no position on this. This is, this is a public perception issue, public confidence issue, and it is one to be resolved by, by the City Council and the mayor. So I'm not sure if that is a long-winded way to answer your question, but it really is not something that the lawyers will be able to answer, other than the potential for what the implications would be if it's a full-blown trial with an appellate process following it.
Yes, that is very helpful. Thank you. And one sort of follow-up, when I think about, you know, a potential charge being brought, in my mind, maybe there's the steps, right? There's maybe an accusation is brought, a formal charge is brought, you know, there might be an indictment, then of course, there's a trial, et cetera, et cetera. And the sort of the decision is where on that spectrum to sort of draw the line of, okay, hey, suspension is justified. Just again, to clarify for us on council, what sort of steps, at what level of burden, if you will, are we at when we're at charge? Like what has been gathered in order to get to that point? If you could help clarify that, I don't know if that's a brief answer or not.
I don't have brief answers. My problem is I don't have brief answers. I'm told that all the time. So I apologize.
No worries.
The issue here may be pragmatic, it may be logistic, and it may relate to the, the question of what the pretrial conditions are. So for example, if someone is charged with an offense, first question will be, which court will it be tried in? So if it's in the District Court of Maryland, you can expect that a trial, assuming no postponements, assuming no delays, that'll be resolved sometime within a 60, 75-day period, sometimes less, depending on the burden of the court at a particular time. If it's a circuit court, as I've indicated to you, depending on the severity or seriousness of the charge, the length of the pretrial period can be a while. Now, in both instances, and this is something for the council to consider, if the person is not released on bond or some kind of pretrial release, you will have to determine whether or not that person is able to attend city business meetings and the like, and participate, vote, things of that nature. You'll have to determine whether or not there are any restrictions that have been placed by the court on a person who is on pretrial release. So in terms of the burdens, other than someone who is either given some form of detention except for work release, which I would suggest to you that if they are elected, the court may carve out an exception to permit a person who was on release to attend city business or employment. But you do have the added, the added question of whether or not that person, that person could or should be involved in city business while he or she is on pretrial release. That's, again, policy decision.
Gotcha. And just to interject, part of what I think I was, and that is very helpful, thank you to understand some of the mechanics of what might happen if, should that occur. I guess part of it was, is maybe the degree of evidence that needs to have been assembled by the time a charge occurs. Again, I'm assuming accusation has been made, the state at that point has gathered evidence, believes that there's enough evidence, whatever the legal term is, in order to bring a charge. Can you describe that piece of like, how high a bar is it to have gotten, to get to the step of a charge being made officially?
So, that's a great question. So there's, there's a phrase called probable cause. And probable cause would mean that there's probable cause to believe that crime has been committed and that the individual who's been accused is, in fact, the perpetrator. So the standard for that is basically a more likely than not that there is reason to believe that this person, that this person may have committed a crime. It is not by any stretch of imagination beyond a reasonable doubt, which is the legal standard that governs prosecution of criminal cases. So probable cause is that there is a reason to believe that a crime has been committed, which usually is not the issue. The second issue is, was this individual the perpetrator? If there's a dispute, two people saying that something happened, it's a he said, she said kind of thing, or whatever, whatever combination of people, and in that case, it may be the prosecutor says, we think that there is enough evidence here for us to proceed to a criminal trial and that we will secure a conviction. So those are, those are the things that are considered. In terms of the probable cause determination, that is made in the first instance by a commissioner of the District Court of Maryland. They sit in different locations. For example, where we are, there are commissioners in Hyattsville, there's a commissioner in Upper Marlboro, and they are the ones who make the decisions on whether or not a person should be released on pretrial pending the trial of the case. So if someone goes out and swears out charges, the commissioner believes that they make out a valid charge, the commissioner would then determine whether or not that person poses a danger to the community and whether or not that person can be released, does not constitute a danger to the community, and is likely to show up for all court assignments and trial dates during the pendency of the, of the pretrial matters. Hopefully, that's.
Yes. I was gonna say, thank you very much. It is very helpful to sort of hear the practicals of the state of the individual, as well as the, sort of the bar, the burden of evidence that would have existed, and then hopefully it was helpful as well. Thank you, Madam President, as we consider this change.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Mayor Sidnor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Councilmember Simmons, Mr. Marcus. I just want to bring to attention that in that same, the new language is saying this person, you know, appealed his process and found out guilty, he got to be compensated and restored back to his position. That's why I say having a person charged is with to the person's found guilty. The person found guilty, then he can be removed. But this person is charged, then he go to court, they found him guilty, then he go back, he overturn it, you got to pay him back everything, restore him back to his position. So that's why I say keep the original language, you know, because all kinds of scenarios that Mr. Marcus can give us, all kinds of scenarios, we come out with scenarios. But at the bottom line, if this person appealed the process, you got to reinstall this person back to the position and compensation and his money. So I think that old language should stay. That's my take on it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Go ahead, Mr. Bruce. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just as, just as a point, and this is not anything other than just, you know, one potential middle ground, if, if there's anyone who is looking for that. One of the things that can happen is in this provision that is before you, it is, shall be immediately suspended. Depending on, you know, there are a variety of different kinds of crimes, some of which, you know, we could take, we could take a vote on what it takes for any of you to say that's really a bad situation. So the question then becomes, because there's such variability in the seriousness of crimes, that one of the possibilities would be for you to consider the option to suspend as opposed to a mandatory suspension. And that just gives you yet another opportunity to determine whether or not you think that that person should be sitting in a public office during the pendency of trial. Now, having said that, I would also give to you for your consideration, an example, which I really don't like doing, but in the District of Columbia, there was a member of the City Council who was removed. And so there are arguments that could be made that the removal would be for political purposes, where some people thought that this was a way to remove somebody. That's a possibility. But what it does is, it gives at least the City Council options of what to do in a case where the allegations are pretty serious and they're not something that can easily be overlooked. But that's, again, in the eye of the beholder. So, Mr. Mayor, that, I just give that to you, sir, as an alternative, as you decide how you want to approach this.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Mayor Sidnor?
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate that option. I like that option. And anyway, appreciate that. If a council member missed so many meetings anyway, if they're incarcerated, whatever the case may be, the council, according to our charter, has, can remove that council based on the vote, according to our charter. So I like that option, Mr. Marcus. Appreciate that. And that's why we hire you to give us advice, not for us, for us to write the legislation. So we will take that option in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your questions and your input. I don't see any additional questions. Are there any objections to moving this to our regular meeting? Okay. I'm sorry. All right. With, with, with the option, which will be an amendment to what is currently written. Okay, so hearing no objections, this item will be placed on our next meeting, which will happen shortly.
Madam President, I do have a question.
Okay.
I just want clarification on, to, to move forward, which are we moving forward? Because we have three sections in, in this section, 315. So you have the section in yellow, and then you have the section that the mayor spoke about, in which you have some, some of that, that is, that is struck, and then there's some that's underlined, like that was added to that. So which are we moving forward with?
So the strike-throughs are from what was there previously?
Right. The original.
The original, correct. The, the one in the yellow, that is the ones that, that is considered the amendment and the proposed. And then in addition to that, what Mr. Bruce brought up was to add with an option to suspend that individual, which wasn't originally in this document, which would be added. Does that clarify?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out, how can we move forward with this?
So we can, that's what we're saying, is that we're gonna, we, if there are no objections, we will move forward to place this on our regular meeting, which will start shortly, soon, to then further discuss and either add any additional suggestions, et cetera. All right, of course, with the amendment that we discussed. Understood?
All right.
Okay. Great. So with no additional objections or questions, we will place this on the neck, the agenda for our regular meeting coming up shortly for a first public hearing, which would have started at 6:00 PM, but it will start shortly. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Again, thank you for your input, your questions. It all matters as we proceed. And with that, we will start, yeah, no, we will start, we will start, provide a five-minute break for everyone, and then we will start at 6:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you so much.